Nope, not what I want. Where would these people? People, okay, good. We have no one on right now, but um. Go ahead and record.
Yeah.
Oh, it's already recording.
Okay. All right. That one minute. Thirty seconds.
Oh, this this clock's wrong, that's why.
Is it wrong?
I I think you're right.
Yeah. Okay, six thirty. All right, six thirty P M. Time to call the City of Torrington Conservation Commission. Meeting to order at the City Hall Auditorium. Room two eighteen, whoops, wrong, wrong room. Did it twice. Room two fifteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington. Um, present is Dan McGinnis, Aaron Stelma, uh Jeremy Spitz, Jeff Palacca. Myself, Christine Altman, and staff member Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner. Minutes for approval for the August nineteen twenty twenty five regular meeting. Okay, we have a second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion carries with Jeremy stating. New business, bow hunting on University Drive property.
Speaking of which.
Yeah.
What a timely cover. Uh, I I just brought this up to you all on. We had a request from someone, I think that they they live in Torrington and they're up by University Drive. They wanted to know if we allowed bow hunting at the big property up there. I told them no, it's a public works owned property, it doesn't have a specific conservation. Cumbrance that, you know, the deed doesn't say it's just a conservation. Um, but in my mind, it was a suitable, if there was gonna be a suitable for Torrington property, it would be that one. It's the the largest one and and kind of the conservation. It's about a hundred and change.
Is this where that orchard?
Yes.
But it's not that. It's not that parcel.
The other side?
No, 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 it is on that side, but it's it's just not that.
Well.
The orchard parcel's not included.
Oh, right, the orchard part, so the orchard parcel is on the the property that's owned by Five Points.
Yes.
So this is the orchard, the community garden that people don't really know about. Uh, including the owner, and then this is this is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get an update on that.
Yeah, oh, eighty four acres, I fall.
Eighty four, huh?
Eighty four acres kind of wraps around this inholding here. Um, but there's no real use of it right now, we have. The entirety of this kind of complex, which has various ownerships, is hanged by butch clog right now. Um, we have no hay lease, I was trying to a couple of years ago. Get one, just so that the relationship was established, not even like for one dollar or some kind of consideration. And it's just a priority, so um. So that just is uh kind of hanging out in Corporation Council. He still hays it to my knowledge, I mean, I don't, I mean, I'm assuming he is haying it, I, you know, I communicated with him when we found this out. He was amenable to getting into a contract with the city. Um, but, you know, uh but anyway, so that's that's who's kind of maintaining these fields, but other than that. There's, well, this is off our property, so we're not gonna consider that. Other than that, there's no other active uses. The adjacent property here is owned by Connecticut, State of Connecticut. Um, this is a large landowner only, oh, that's the time to answer this. And uh, and then this is another large property, seventy eight acres. Um, so, you know, I mean, if ever there would be a consideration, I just thought I would bring it up. In in some of my prior conservation work. We had a focus on deer hunting in relation to like regeneration of the forest. Because there was such heavy deer pressure or bribery in those areas that, you know. Trying to incentivize people to take does that would lower the population to help forest health was kind of a priority. In Torrington, I haven't seen that to the same degree, I've seen that in other places, so I don't know if that's a huge priority. Additionally, bow hunting is not, usually there's not as much taken for bow hunting. Um, so would it even have a effect on the population if you ramped it up? Probably not. But I thought I would bring it up just because it is kind of a natural resources conservation type activity. Maybe there's potential other properties, it is a research, it could be like in a, you know, a service to people in the community. But I just wanted to throw it by you guys before I really invested any time into thinking about it.
Honest question, usually for something like that, you'd have to be a landowner consent form sign. Would issue that to the person wanting a home?
We'd probably have to set up some kind of hunting program, so it wouldn't be an unofficial, we would issue a permit. Right, like the city regulates a lot of activities. We would probably issue, have some kind of deer program. We'd have them apply, we'd issue a permit, we'd get information from them on what they shot, where they set up. We would specify the areas that they couldn't couldn't go, all that kind of stuff. So it would be a permission from, I mean, it's a good question, but maybe Public Works, maybe the Land Use Office. Um, we'd have to set up a program to to meet that somehow.
I mean, how much demand is there?
You know, I've heard a few people over the years on different properties, not all on this property here. But a few people just like, oh, is there any, you know, with availability of hunting, and I usually just say, no, this guy, maybe he just called me on a good day. I was like, oh, I'm kind of interested in this, but, you know, it's a it's a conservation commission, feels like it's not something even worth pursuing. To be honest, I'm kind of leaning away from it just because of the administrative issue, but maybe if there was more demand.
And they got to figure out how many, some small tracks like that, the state of Connecticut, they figure like ten or fifty max, like Diggler track. There's only so many allow.
Hunters.
Yeah.
Like per, they would they would limit the permits.
Yeah, different seasons where it was, like, that would be good just for bow hunting for safety, I wouldn't do the college, I wouldn't do skid or firearms in any way. Um, my only concern from being a former hunter, that garden, those people are, have to be. You you the arrows now, not only bows, bow hunting.
Oh, crossbows.
Is crossbows, these things have. Increased ranges, extremely accurate, if you miss. You hit one of those. That garden. Just folks in there, it's, thing is, deer gonna go where peach trees, the garden.
They're gonna be in the open space.
Peaching field. Water over there.
I, I don't see the reason to pursue that. I just. There doesn't seem like there's much of a demand.
Somebody went in there, they have to have a landowner consent.
You need some penny money on the.
I mean, we could charge a nominal fee, right, like, I don't know. You know, we'd probably try to set something to cover the cost of administering it, but. Um, you know, is it a hundred bucks?
Does it help conservation? I'm killing you.
Well, wh- what do you mean, like positively or negatively?
Positive, is there any conservation positive to?
Well, yeah, and that's what, that's my original thinking was just because I've managed a a other deer program before with a conservation focus. But they were in areas that had been like, you know, we're not like where they were not getting any oak coming up, like they were only getting certain species surviving.
Yeah.
Because the deer pressure was so heavy. But to be honest, I haven't looked into like the actual, like if there's been a statewide study. Um, where it was in New York and Hudson Valley, they had like done modeling to show hotspots in areas based on, you know, known. Um, forest data collection points, and they kind of like extrapolated it out. I haven't seen anything like that in Connecticut, I could look a little harder, but.
Like I was talking about, like the wildlife crossings to try to save animals, now we're talking about trying to. Seems like unless like the reason you said where they're they're not letting me.
Right.
So like if we were trying to revive that food forest or whatever that was over there, like we're starting to talk about possibly holding classes and doing stuff like that. The wildlife's coming in, eating and damaging it. Um, could be, I mean, the community gardens, again, I don't know who's using it, but um, we saw with the other community gardens that. Uh, so it could be beneficial from that standpoint if we're trying to protect the the food forest and the community, uh growing aspect of it.
That's interesting.
Cause I know that they're very damaging my gardens, I mean, I luckily have a lot of kids that make a lot of noise, so.
I get the feeling there's not a whole lot of activity over there based on our site visit that we'll talk about later. It seems, I mean, obviously the go, the community garden looks great, it looks like the best thing maintained, so there's people in there for that reason. But other than that, no one is, like I said, butch is paying it a couple of times a year.
Standpoint too, there's also, I mean, I know there's rules and regulations around being so many feet from property lines and boundaries and stuff like that. So I I feel like a a hunter that's well versed and on it with no, you know, what's a safe shooting direction and, you know.
And can we, can we zoom? Oh, are you looking for info?
Oh, yeah, I was looking for feet from an occupiable dwelling, um, what is, um, five hundred feet from a.
From a ten, one, one is fifteen, three and the other one. Different.
But again, I don't know if that's for firearm, bow might be even less, I'd have to do a little bit of research, but there is, the distance isn't from property line, it's from the houses, so.
And and you could limit it, you can probably limit crossbows.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I mean, it could be whatever. For longbow, um, or compound. But it looks like around five hundred, you're talking, and and we can limit the 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 places they could go too, right, like, I mean, you know.
But then you have to.
Of course.
Well, hopefully, I mean, I don't know, I I would, I don't know about enforcing it, but I I just think that if if you have a, who knows? Who knows, the world is changing, but if you have a deadly weapon, you might wanna feel a certain level of responsibility, but that doesn't mean that it happens.
I mean, I'm kind of for the outdoor sports because there's, you can listen on the couch nowadays, so I kind of like to preserve people's ability to till, to still have hobbies like that. That's personal stance, I just see some, but I mean, the younger generations aren't doing it. So you don't have to worry about high schoolers going in there with their recurves and compound. Yeah. So who knows?
Something I saw in college, we though a watershed company. There are, so one one of them years, years ago. Say in the city of Torrington, there were fifty acre lot everywhere. Someday if they ever did, they'll. Cover a list of areas where they could go, I don't know, places, bow only, certain control two. Couple of seasons. Deep dip, deep. Game wardens.
Hang on, officers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, they do the state lands, but I know they also enforce, you know, if I had poachers on my land or something. City, you know, our own police. It's like that.
Mm-hmm. Can you just zoom out, I wanna see how close that is to, so where's Pogna State Forest, that's that way, right?
Um, Pogna is up here.
That's Pog, okay, that is big.
And then this is New Field, or.
No, that's Sunnybrook, right?
That's what I mean.
Yeah, I always see, when I walk in Pogna State Forest, that I see hunters all the time.
Like stands?
No, guys walking around with their guns.
Yeah.
Mostly, and I think they're, I mean, everybody I've talked to, they're like, eh, I don't really shoot so much anymore, I just, you know, like to come out here and.
Right, with their stalking deer or they didn't like.
One guy was uh, one guy was small game.
Squirrels, squirrels there, you got deer.
Yep.
Crows, you got coyotes, different seasons.
We sell licenses, does the state sell licenses for hunting coyote, I thought they, do they do trap, I think they do trapping, right?
I think they do trapping for coyote, but I don't know much about trapping.
Yeah, 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 season, you just need a small game.
Yeah, so unless there's, you know, unless there's a reason to do this, I mean, if if the things are being. If the state's saying, hey, look, you guys got a problem because, you know, the deer are overwhelming everything. I would not bother with.
I can research, I I'm kind of curious about it myself, to be honest.
Yeah.
Um. My, um, I've kind of looked for it, and I haven't seen a lot of evidence of, like, cause you'll see.
You've been in areas that are.
Right, you could see a hedging where they'll like constantly like eat a small oak tree, and it'll regrow and it'll turn into a bush. See all these like bushes that are kind of clearly been, you know, nipped and pruned, and I don't see that a whole lot. It's not as much oak here, cause it's getting more like northern. Um, but I I'll do a little bit more research, I mean, I think it seems like it's not like a completely shut the book on it, but. You know, at the same time, we really wanna have a really good reason and wanna uh.
But just pursue it. There's no complaint.
Not that, but I can do more research, I don't, uh again, I don't know.
Sometimes it's a special ones when there's heavy predator or heavy vegetation destruction, like crop damage.
Right, a- and you're right, and they do issue crop damage permits, so I mean. It's interesting, cause the, cause the peach trees aren't on our property.
They are not?
Issue, no, they're on the Five Point property, so it's like, would they issue a cro- a a crop damage permit for protection of another property? Um, I don't know.
But when I ask Girl Scope, she is right across the, right across the pond there, that's the pond.
Ask him about deer?
Yeah.
Yeah, similar kind of like context.
Yeah.
I mean, I see, definitely see deer up in that area. Crossing the road, I don't see a lot.
Their preferred habitat, like they like. They like, uh, you know, these kind of spaces more, right?
They like what, two acre, two acre?
They like edge.
Yeah.
They like edge, so it's like these kind of subdivided where it's just like. Right, or this sort of landscape where they can hide in the woods in these little patches, or come out and feed on all these edges. That's like their preferred, in Torrington, thankfully, you know, from a forest health point, it's all this like dense concentrated grow, like like urban growth here. And then these big tracks of forests, and it just doesn't support as large of deer numbers.
Bears like it.
The bears like it.
Yeah.
Is this person that asked you, is he waiting another answer or?
You know, I told, I I told him, I didn't, I I thought it was gonna be a no, definitely for this year. Um, I told him I would talk um about it at conservation and I gave him the the date.
Does he live in that area, like what was his interest?
I don't wanna say he was cagey, but he didn't really, you know, he said he lived nearby, he wasn't an adjacent property owner, cause I did ask him that. Um, it was, I think it was just convenient for him to access and he knew that the city owned it and like. I mean, I think the same thing with these nice field edges, you know, you set up here, you're far away from a lot of people.
Respect the question. Confidence, not asking about his identity.
No. So I told him I would bring it up, cause I thought it was worth having a discussion on it, but I told him that that we weren't gonna have an answer by this year anyway. If you wanted to check in, or if you wanted to make a pitch directly, you know, that we'd be happy to hear him about it and uh. Well, it's more like, does it, is it something that we wanna discuss as far as?
Like, interesting topic, let's talk about it.
Kind of, yeah, yeah, and I mean, I don't think we're gonna move on it, I mean, obviously, we're not moving on anything this year.
Any of the spaces that are similar or that we allow?
We don't allow anywhere, um, I mean, that would take its own kind of a look, but you know.
They're all allowed on state land, right?
Right.
I never see anybody hunting at Bur Pond.
Well, Bur, can you do it at Bur Pond?
I don't, how could you?
You can do it at Sunnybrook.
You can hunt at, bow, okay, so that must still must be Sunnybrook and uh, and and um, Pogna. Walnut Mountain.
But uh.
What do they do for like the land trust, all the land trusts all over? And the owner can, there's no.
Do you, do you do hunting on my trust property?
Yeah.
We, you don't know, as far as I don't know, they're, you didn't ask. So maybe they're, maybe they have, but they they have.
Right, you might find deer stands.
We have, we have sound deer stand.
Yeah, there's deer stands all up, and there's little hunters cabins, like it's all on private property. But at the top of, you know, the Red Mountain Ridge that leads to Sunnybrook, there's hunting that happens there.
Cause they know that there's no one around, and that is actually another benefit.
I always wondered whether the landowners, like just are hunters, I I always wondered if that's why they have such big tracts of land.
Yeah.
Cause there's, there's private hunting cabins up there and.
Oh, so maybe it's a, yeah, hunting property, it's gospel. Um, one of the other benefits, potential benefits, is if there was a problem here with illegal hunting. Permitting a couple of people to keep an eye on things, cause once you, once you hand that over to a hunter, to get early proprietary, yeah. And they're, and they're gonna, they're gonna report any hunting stand.
They're gonna start putting cameras out there and.
Totally, and so you kind of.
Neighbors hardcore.
Well, and even, well, they don't even have to, I mean, in my experience, if you don't want them to do that stuff, they're gonna take the permission very seriously, and they'll wanna.
Especially if they're asking. Me.
I don't think they would, they would do that, like, like, be, like feeding or anything.
You wanna know where there's a surprising deer stand, it's next to my house.
In the, in the woods there?
Yes.
That's really, that's pretty shocking, actually.
Yeah.
Downtown deer?
Yeah.
Oh, man.
Well, I'll think about it, I mean, that's probably a wildlife corridor.
Maybe they're hunting squirrel. I I have a neighbor that makes squirrel pot pie.
I, well, I have guinea pig, and it's amazing, so I think squirrel might be great, but.
Tastes like chicken.
Yeah. But uh, no, I I kind of wonder, cause there's that, I don't know, there's, there's that wooded area that goes along the, I don't know, sewer lines or what? Power lines, but yeah, there's like, there's fire rings there, there's a deer stand, I guess.
Oh, wow.
And hopefully, it's bow.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, it's bow.
I can't imagine it wouldn't be, oh, I mean, but even that, did, if you heard, remember there was that show, it was out where they did bow hunting in like Greenwich? And it was like, just like, you know, the guy, cause you shoot it, and then you gotta track it, so picture, you shoot it on the sloppies of land. And then you're like ru- rummaging through and knocking on people's houses and being like, my dear man, right there, there goes, and today, you gotta make arrows sticking out of the back of them.
I don't think they. Do have to go on private property call. Especially after sunset and you have a game board. Get your, your.
Really, they'll do.
Well, no.
Your animal legally, when you get home, like especially through down at Greenwich, chasing a deer through Bel Air.
Probably a shot.
So what I can do is I can do, I'll do the research on what the state has, I'll reach out to Earl, and um. And may, maybe I'll even go and, maybe I'll even look at like other towns, if they write, see like other town hunting programs.
That'd be interesting.
Right down in the town. Got the hunting guide, it spells everything out.
Right.
Well, the great beast, or talks about Sunnybrook in there, all of it.
Well, that's actually, yeah, I mean, I imagine that there, it's one of those things where like maybe there's not demand because it's not. You know, it's not there, um, again, I'm a little soft about this kind of stuff, because I I liked managing a hunting program, and so I thought it was uh, you know, but.
I mean, hunting's a great conservation program, I.
But well, I mean, again, I I think we, I agree that we probably needed more compelling reason than just, like I had to mine my own administrative time. If I'm doing like a whole thing and there's one guy who goes out, you know, is it like, we're gonna promote it, is it gonna, you know? Uh, we get, we get college interns sporadically, so it's like.
I was gonna say, that's great.
It would be, to manage the, yeah, we probably wanna have a co, another good reason to have a compelling sort of like natural resources tie in, like. Other than just recreation, like, hey, we're doing this for, for health and, and all this stuff, but I do know from doing it that work. You know, we would issue um shotgun and rifle permits where we were in New York, and bow, you know, would all be, you know, they'd apply for the permit. And, you know, we tried to incentivize does, right, like, take his man, like, take does, you like move up in the lottery, and we actually had quite a few people, we'd have like. Ten people or so on a thousand acre property taking. And sometimes do. Um, but even that, and then we would track, we would monitor the vegetation with the box and see if we could see like an improvement over time and all that stuff. And I mean, it really didn't, it didn't have, you really almost need one of those call programs where, where it's really bad anyway, where. They go in and they like, with a, with a sharpshooter and they take out like thirty deer in a night, and you know. Uh, and and that's extremely, where they have to do that, where it's really bad, it's so controversial, cause you're doing it because you're close to like. The urban neighborhoods and stuff, and then someone finds out that you're doing a mass killing with spotlights in the backyard and.
Good things, Connecticut.
That's where I like, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's a, you know, um, but anyway, I mean, I think I'll go back and just kind of look through this stuff, not a huge priority, just keep the conversation kind of going, and if. You know, if you wanna stop it at any time, uh I can also try to make like a list of folks that call, and if people call, just know, like.
Just start tracking it, it loves you. It could, I mean, it might be looking.
Yeah, it can tell.
Whoever's talking.
Yeah.
Right, when I talk, it's trying to find me, I'm right here. Okay, so old business, owl boxes update.
Um. Oh, yeah, so owl boxes, so the last that we, we had a discussion, Jeff was talking about how we got the wood, he has the wood. It's not properly like seasoned, like it's still off gassing and it's not ideal to make the boxes now. I ended up getting ahold of the Oliver Wilkett shop teacher. He was still enthusiastic, totally understood about the the pressure treated. So right now, our goal is, he said, get it to me February, early February, drop it off on like, you know. First, second week of February, we'll have you four boxes in a week. So. That's basically, they said, whenever that, when we get closer to that date, we do still have to buy the hardware.
Have to research the hardware, what we need, and then uh we need like one by some things.
Yeah, the box, I was surprised, the box design was, as soon as we said it was half inch plywood, he said, that's not gonna really work with attaching the pieces. Cause it's not thick enough without additional supports. And the plans didn't show anything other than the two by four, but when you looked at a picture of the box, it had right of plywood. It just had one buys in the corners to fasten into, so, I mean, that's not expensive, and I'm sure that they would donate. That to, I don't know, what are we, what are we?
Supply it, I don't.
What do we ask for, like, like softwood tomato stake, I don't even know.
Yeah, I I don't really, I, well, I don't think you wouldn't want softwood, right? Do you want softwood?
You can buy. So, pine, it's kiln dried pines, one by threes, one by twos, then you have uh, of the sperm is the rest of it.
But so would you wanna get, because it's like, you know, the, they, picture the box, and then the corners are reinforced, you can drill the hardware in at two angles on them, right?
I get some kind of one by, they could rip it down.
Right, you wanna do a bigger one by, and then they ripped the, maybe that's a question for them, if they wanna rip one by.
But I mean, I bet you only need one by something to have.
And how long, right, if you have like an eight foot section?
They asked, I'm saying, you probably only need one, but I'll, I'll do the math and I'll figure out.
Even two by four, with the actual measurement of a two by four, it's actually one, one and three quarter by three and a half.
Disappointing.
Right.
Yeah, so and it's, you get at least more meat. Quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, neither one's.
Today's price.
A lot of them are twisted.
That was my thought too, and then you get states that are kind of like.
Yeah, a lot of us.
So, the kiln dried by fours or one by three, that southern yellow piment is a good twist. You get the dug fur, another two dug fur, two. On two bats, not pressure treated.
And you don't need, I mean, it's, you wouldn't need pressure, right? Well, so you you'll do the math on.
Figure it out, I'll look and say, I was looking, take a look at the picture inside the box, I don't think it happened.
And I can ask him about what he wants.
Yeah.
What they want, they're the ones who are building, if they, you know, he's probably have more experience.
Yeah, smart, smart move.
All right, so yeah, I'll keep in touch with him, we have time on that, cause.
February.
It was a pretty quick turnaround with Ifland, I mean, they're donating one, you know, one by, or two by four, or like the whole two by fours, it's not. I have.
Purple Martins correspondence with Mary Gilfoyle.
What was the last with that?
So the last one was, is she did go to Audubon, so so Mary contacted me about, she went to an Audubon talk regarding purple martins. And um. You know, trying to build up their numbers, and her thought was Bowman Gardens is perfect, and they'll eat the black flies, and if it's at Bowman Gardens. Then she'll maintain them, uh, cause it's like a condo complex of boards, or it's a built house or whatever. So I said, sure, we'll, we'll um, we'll discuss it. And so it was discussed in the office, Jeremy's bird guy, and Nate did some research, and it turns out you need to be, they need like an open field. That's within eyesight of water, forty feet from a tree line. Um, so we sent that information to Mary through the minutes, and that was very disappointing to her. So then she was like, can I give us these guys in that office? And I get up, cause she really was very attached to the idea of doing it at Bowman Gardens and not Torrel Fields. And um, so she went and chatted with somebody at Audubon who said, no, they're absolutely right. Your location is not, and and not a good location.
That happens to also be our police chief, I mean.
Oh, really?
Fire team.
Oh, okay.
He's a big. Oh yeah, he, he travels all over, in addition to fighting fires.
So, yeah, but I still thought it was an interesting, um, project idea.
And this is what, this would be my spot, I think, because, so you got this large, this nogtuck, biggest section of it. The ball fields, it's open area for foraging, they like prefer meadows, but this entire like shoreline area of the Army Core project, they just let it grow up, so it's kinda meadowy there anyway, so the meadow and water and open area, um, you know, it seems like.
Seems like it would just be kind of a fun thing for that location as well, like for people who use it.
And Audubon makes the boxes, this is literally just a like installation project?
Pretty sure, I have to, I'm waiting for her to give me the information on that, cause I'm, I'm unclear.
Cause that would be like a parking rack, we'd have to find a locate, like a suitable location. Like, I, I doubt you'd wanna put it in the middle of the dog park, that'd probably be not so nice for the birds, but, uh, but I don't know, like, and then this is the Army Core project, so it's like, you know, near but not in the project. Yes, and this is the bike path, so it would be like a cool thing to demonstrate on the bike path, too, right, to have like, I mean, they're, they're cool looking as you saw. Right, like they got the, uh.
Uh, swift, right?
They're a, they're a, a swallow.
Swallow, that's right, swallow, and this bright blue colored swallow.
They're very, they're very handsome, and, uh, I've seen them like this too, where they have like a bunch of gourds and they all, they, they roost in colonies, so that's why they have it like that. But, uh, anyway, I, I, where should we leave that? I mean.
How about, uh, the next thing is to figure out what the actual program is, does the Audubon supply the, the hotel and? Let's, let's find that out first.
Just continue, continue to feed Oliver Wilket different box design. I mean, yeah. I was gonna say, I mean, it's not a horrible idea, um, if they can make functional things. Remember the things I made for woodshop, cause middle school, woodshop.
He just did a shape of a piece, uh, a whale, there's my whale, there's my, my old duck, did you? Everybody loves a whale.
I did a CD rack too, that can be very useful these days.
Okay, the five point orchard update.
So the three of us went, does someone wanna take the, the lead on this, or I can, I can report out?
Three of us went, we backed to the tree, consider very interesting. Some of them are leaned over, they haven't been, uh, maintained in an orchard kinda way, they're kinda just growing wild. Fruit is. Taste test there.
Any, any help?
I did find one. Peaches we did.
Yeah, peaches.
Peaches are like on the white.
Did we see there was like blackberries or some kind of berries right there on the brush before you get to the?
Oh, really?
Yeah, this, this area is all blackberries.
Oh, okay, is it wild blackberries or are they cultivated, okay? So the little guys, the ones the horses like.
Yeah, they're not that little. Well, they're not like the giant ones. But they're like, you know that.
Oh, okay.
Well, no, they have just, I just mean like.
One thing I noticed about peaches, where you have peaches, you know, one of them's like, almost like right into the ground, was the proximity to leeching fields, and I know closeness to the leeching field they are. That's a controversial.
How far, that's a good question, how far is, cause they, it's rather far, but it's, it is, it probably depends more on.
Well, so it's a five acre leeching field, it's basically cut in half.
It's there, I'm assuming it's there.
I was thinking.
And what's the slope, the slope is that way?
Well, that would be, that's what I'm thinking, that's kinda the.
Which way the slope goes, cause I think it's slopes away from the road, towards the forest. Yeah, so I don't think there's any.
Is there some kind of a?
Moving this way.
Yeah, there's no danger from the leech field.
Some kind of a thing of edible, potable, potable water, that close to leeching field, that something you wanna be right up on top of.
I just think that the, the, the direction of the leeching, it's gonna go this way. Um, and it, I mean, three hundred feet is not, that's a pretty far distance to have.
I thought it was closer, cause I know the farm was right over there.
When we were there, I thought it was pretty far.
It's pretty flat there, like you're on the same grade, so it, it seems like, oh, it's, you know, right over there, it is pretty far.
My dumb question for the day was the whole green field there for leeching field, peaches and the little community garden, is that, is that whole thing considered a leeching field?
It's, I think it's just the area where the infiltration pa- like galleries are, where it's actually in the substrate, like the sand or whatever, that it's, like, that's the area of the leech field. I mean, obviously, it's, you know, it doesn't stay contained within that, there is like migration, but I would think it goes this way.
Brought that up was from Tom Ridgefield wastewater treatment plant males.
But that was like pretty much right on the, the leech field, right? I think from this distance and this direction, I wouldn't be too concerned about that element of it.
So, actually, that's an interesting question, so if that's downhill, place where the guy wants to hunt, it's right at the bottom of the, that's where the absolute, oh, right?
Well, I mean, it's a big property, right, so he's taught, you know, I mean, I would, if I was him, and I was gonna hunt it, there's a pull off right here, right? I'd probably set up somewhere over here, maybe, right, cause the morning sun's coming this way, so you stay out of the glare. And like, I mean, at night, it's gonna hit this way, maybe they would set up over here, um, or down in here, even on the edge looking down or something like that.
What are those little patches in the?
These? Could that, maybe they're just rock or something that they, no, it's just, it's just a feature to mow around.
No swamp or tees.
Well, and I was thinking about that too, cause there is, um, there's a wetland, right? Yeah, I, I think that there's gotta be some kinda reason that they're not mowing this, like bra- like boulders or something in the field, um, but this is all wetland here. So I agree, like, you know, you wouldn't, well, they literally can't hunt in here because it's five points property. But, you know, could be a situation which it goes into the swamp where it's moving back and forth, I mean, and the property is so large in terms of hunting. Oh, it's. I actually walked this recently because, well, cause, you know, di- diversion, but there's a trail project, right, but this is, this is the property that's owned by, um, historical society, where Torrington Trails is a loop in there, if you haven't been there, it's awesome, there's a four board walk. In here, and then it goes all the way to Five Points, and there's plans to continue a trail down through here, and then you'd end up at, uh, Stillwater Pond.
Wow.
So to actually provide hu- uh, hiking for Stillwater would be awesome, right? You know, the issues are, you have to cross here, so there'd have to be some kind of like signal, like pet crossing, which maybe not a big deal, and then this is owned by the state. You have to, we have to cross through state land and then get up this grade, but it's kinda cool, cause there's this like ravine, so I just kinda walked down through the ravine into here. And it was a really cool, uh, you know, just, you know, you have to kinda actually have skilled trail builders working on it, but you can kinda like go down through this gorge and end up down here, um, and it wasn't that bad, it really wasn't that crazy, I mean, compared to some of these other contours here. It's, it's pretty limited here, uh, really beautiful spring ephemerals, like, like the bloodroot and, um, trillium and all that kinda stuff, so that was pretty good, so, um, but, uh, anyway.
And what's, what's the status with Five Points, are they still talking to an attorney and trying to get rid of that piece or what?
Yeah, so part of this conversation was that, um.
Oh, we gotta back up and get the animal to speed.
You wanna get rid of that?
So, yeah.
I wrote, I wrote Judith McElhul a letter, asking if she wanted to collaborate with us on the food forest, and I sent her the original article on that food forest and how it was probably, as far as we knew, the first one on the east coast, and blah, you know, da, 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 went fifteen years ago, all the stuff. And that, these are our, our ideas, and if nothing else, we could use it as a place to have, um, host like pruning um, workshops and things like that, and so Nate gets a call, being like, say what now? You know, what do you want from us, and, and she had no idea that she owned that part. She thought she only owned the leech field, she thought she owned five acres. She thought she only owned half of it.
Cause I was like, you're gonna sell off your leech field.
Right, so she, so Nate's like, nah, I think, and she's like, no, no, I know I don't own it. So he looked into it, and she does own it, and she doesn't want it, because, I mean, cause I.
What are they gonna do with it other than the leech field, leech field is important for that. Cause it services that.
And then other people are using it, so she doesn't know, she doesn't have any relationship, I don't think, with whoever's doing the community garden.
She had no idea who they were.
Right, and, and then, you know, we have this little orchard, no, nobody knows who's.
And they didn't have like a plaque.
I thought it used, it was for Trinity Church.
For the food, for the soup kitchen?
Not so, years ago, that's what I thought, doesn't mean that it's right, that's what I heard somewhere.
It, oh yeah, there's, there's stuff going, I mean, look, this is.
Very active.
This is from this year.
So somebody's gotta camp out there and, and talk to whoever.
There's no, there's, there's a no trespass.
I would love to camp there.
I'm gonna bring my tent.
I could, I could. I believe so.
It was locked, yeah, the gate was locked in.
Gonna say, I was like, I could leave a note there, but it's like, it's not our property, it's kinda like, if, if we owned it, then yeah, we could like make it.
I, I say she could just do a nice lot line revision and, uh, deed that over to the conservation commission.
So, if those people were using that for so many years, you have, there's something in the palm, like, and domain is not. Those folks were using that for a hundred years.
Possession, we own that. Except that it was ours, oh no, it was the state's, no, was it Torrington's or the state's?
It was always the state's.
That was the state's, by the way, okay.
I mean.
Did it be living there or just native?
You just have to be using it openly without permission.
And go to court and, and hope they don't show up.
Like we did on that, whatever that drive.
But I, I don't think, yeah, that's right.
Because I was gonna say, I could go and put a note on there with like.
It's almost their obligation to figure out who.
Totally, yeah, I.
It is their obligation to figure out who the hell uses their own property.
So, actually, that's, that's great, because now, now she is a squatter on her land.
Oh, with our food forest?
And, and that, oh.
Well, this isn't ours.
No, but I'm saying, I'm, no, they're a squatter and we're a squatter.
Somebody had permission at one point.
Everybody has permission.
I don't know.
At one point, we just were, were left out of the, of the, whatever the planning phase of this whole thing was.
Nice planting stuff going on in there, I'm a, have a garden.
I know, I mean, I think that that's kinda, it's kinda cool, you could have another, you know, you could have another whole community garden system up there if this uh, if the city owned it.
But that's why I'm almost kinda interested to know who it is, just because we could like, court pay better with the community garden than Donahue, right?
And unlike Bowman Gardens. There's deer net, they got the thing.
Oh yeah, they had a fence, nice.
Oh yeah, like, the only thing that could really hurt that was if they forgot.
She doesn't think she owns it, next time you talk to her, why don't you say, would you like me to find out who owns it?
No, 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 she knows now, she didn't think she owned it, but she knows now she owns it, and I think she's in con- she was like, talking to an attorney about it, right? I just think that's so funny.
If she doesn't want it, why don't you just say?
That's what I'm saying, like, not, not, not line revision, just simple lot line revision. What, what do you see, oh, you're looking to say?
Five feet, how awesome is that? Measure the deer fence. Yeah.
Five foot fence, yeah.
I mean, I would give it a little bit of tolerance, but they can jump an eight foot fence.
Somebody, something there.
But, uh, anyway, so, um, do you, should I, should I try to put a note, like, put a little like laminated?
Why not, that'd be interesting.
Reach out, she really doesn't care.
We'd like to collaborate sincerely.
Sincerely, the other, the other squatters. Okay.
Get rid of it, why don't we just ask her if she wants, if we can pick it up?
Uh, I kinda.
So he had that kinda.
I think I kinda said that, I was like, I think the conservation commission would be willing to take it. I don't know about the ci- I mean, the city would have to agree, right, like, it would have to the council, but, um, she was kinda like, let me, like, figure it out.
I think she was like shocked.
Why can't she just gift it?
Well, there's gotta be legal fees.
So let me, let me ask this, just from the short time we were there. My two cents as a beautiful piece of property, if I ever have a chance.
Of course.
Gotta do what, what, five acres, right? The, the, we were talking about the feed trees before, they're, they're kinda in rough shape, I mean, I mean, they're, they're good, they're producing, but they're all.
I would love to see a workshop there though.
I think it was too far gone, or?
Well, that's why I would love to see a workshop there.
Yeah, a lot of people are gonna have trees like that on their property.
Yeah, I mean, people move and they're like, I don't know what to do with this, I don't really wanna kill it, but yeah, doesn't have any hope.
One tree was completely uprooted but still alive.
That was out of peach tree?
It was a peach tree.
I bet it had been pulled down by the weight of the fruit, I have a peach tree that's like that, I thought I fixed it.
And I think they're all dwarfs, because nothing was over, nothing was over ten feet.
If you wanted to agree, um, no, it's a good idea, uh, say we take the whole, all the whole parcel and give them an eas- and they just have an easement.
That's true, that's easy, that way there's, that way.
Do we have any money in our?
We don't need to buy it, she doesn't want it, it's a liability.
Well, we could pay, no, but we could pay for the, so there's the, there's the legal cost, and then there's like a survey cost for doing.
Could we offer to cover that?
Have, I probably do, how much do we have?
I don't know.
It's like, we have like fifteen thousand.
Oh, that's not bad.
Yeah, so, not enough for actual buying property, like.
But it, doesn't it, but our land anyway, so we would just be, we would just extend.
Yeah, so the thing I'd have to, and I'm, I'm happy to do that, cause it is a wonderful piece of property, um.
They, they would have the easement to.
And it's, yeah.
Maintain there.
Yeah, exactly. Love that idea.
I, I think that's a great idea, actually. Especially cause we have the adjacent property.
But then you don't need a lot.
So this is a s- super complicated, this was a super complicated deal and it's when Five Points moved in, so, and this is, I would run this, I'm happy to run this by corporation council, I agree with you all. So, in the beginning, this was all owned by the city of Torrington. Like, the beginning, like, you know, early nineteen hundreds.
That whole thing was.
The whole thing was the Torrington Town Farm, where the, what, like convicted people would.
Grow a poorhouse.
Right, poorhouse, so the whole property was Torrington. The state of Connecticut bought the entire thing and put the money there, or it came to UConn, to whatever.
Sorry, I forgot, the Litchfield Jail was right up the road, and they probably had the inmates.
That makes sense, yeah, yeah, easily get them out there. So, once UConn held it and they wanted to dispose of it, there was a kind of complicated transaction in which this was re-deeded back to the city, the piece that, you know, that we own in fee now, right? This piece ended up going to Five Points for like a nominal fee. And then this piece, still owned by Torrington.
Yeah, I don't understand.
Reverting to.
Five points.
Five points, or ten years or something like that, they don't really know what they're gonna do with it either, they're kinda like.
Oh, why, I, I wonder, why do you think they wanted to, why did Torrington wanna do that?
No idea why, I mean.
I don't understand that one.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, or sell off.
I wish I was aware and, and, uh.
There's a lot of wetlands, it is kind of a difficult, it's difficult lot, it's ta- it's not tax revenue, cause they're five oh one C three, so it's not even like taxable.
It's, it's the city of Torrington or the Torrington Historical Center?
Tor- city of Torrington.
Okay.
So, so, so the city is still owns it, but the agreement is that it will go to Five Points again. And then this state went with Five Points with this piece here, so there's still kinda gears turning in which Five Points is gonna get even more property.
How do you even get to it, is there?
There's a row, so Bush has a. There's a road, so Bush has a.
Which has special ways.
So he ha, he hays that?
Yeah.
It's not in all the like woods.
Yes, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a farm road. Goes all the way through here and he hays up there. I know, it's not a.
Put his tractor, like how do you, how does he?
Well, from from all the way up University Drive, from his house over here.
Is that what he does?
Think the club people, I've been trying to figure out. Massive, massive Ferguson, you know, John Deere, there's headers. They come by my house. These are not small, small tractors.
They're the Y-golds.
It's gotta be the Y-golds.
Yeah, Y-golds.
Yeah, cause they're up in your neck of the woods. They're up on Ygold Road, like.
Cause I thought, how we see him going down Stillwater Pond Road and then.
And they have, they still have an active dairy up there. And so they have, they need dairy support for, right, I'm assuming all that, a lot of the land up there. That's like, this is Klug Kingdom down here and this is like the Ygold, you know, stronghold up here.
Yeah, let's look at that one. That's their dairy farm?
Yep, and this is all deed restricted too. There's actually, it's all protected.
Well, I think, I thought he was gonna sell it for personal.
Those look suspicious. There's no to show up.
Well, no, he just sells the hay. I think that's all he does.
Oh, that, yeah, that's just hay. I thought that was the newer. But yeah, this is.
The giant.
This is an old bunker, right? Is that what this is? Like a newer bunker? Cause this looks like a dairy building.
Well, here's the thing, when you see those, those big hay rounds, either you're selling that or you gotta.
No, he's selling it.
Or he's selling animals.
He used to do a lot of dairy and then they had gotten out of cows. He has a few for himself, but.
So they don't, so they don't do.
Playing a hundred cows.
Well, right, kinda see in, it's not a.
I drive up there and I definitely do not see a hundred.
Don't cows.
I'm, I'm pretty sure they're.
I trust, uh, yeah.
Wow, look at that, look at this. Three silos, four silos as well.
We're thinking about working with it. Use their land, uh, do our own.
House?
House there, yeah.
I had somebody up there about recent hay prices. I'm not going off on a tangent, but they're getting, they're getting hay right now.
Okay, so.
I'll follow up and report back on a lot of that stuff. I mean, I'll definitely, I'll follow up with our attorney on like, you know, if we can. Make them offer or something, you know, if we have money to pay for the administrative costs, cause I think they don't want it. I just don't know with this other agreement, like. Yeah, if it behold, if we're beholden to something or would have to draft a revision that had to be signed or, but again, if we can pay for the administrative stuff. You know.
That would make me happy. Love to have that. Anyway, uh staff update, open space, fee land inventory.
So the last, the thing we were kinda hung up on last time was um going to the Greenbrier. Um property, or so this is the Greenbrier subdivision. There was a number of open space parcels, so it's actually one of our. Not the eighty-five acres up there size, but it's another one of the larger conservation land holdings. So it's this piece, oh, not that piece, this piece is actually another piece in Litchfield that we own. Goes out like this, um this piece, this piece. This piece and this piece. Nope, that's them. Um so it's this kinda back part of the property. And the point was that we have an easement. Access through this area and get to here to view the property. It's impassable. Um we sent several letters to the property owner asking if we could access from the north. Which would be a lot easier. We'd be able to kinda skirt through here, get onto our property this way. Um. Anyone know? Don Ayers or?
In one of, oh no, the person, is there an empty, are there a couple empty lots I want to pull to sacks?
This is the, these are all empty.
Those are the, those are the empty ones. They, one of those people came in, one of those people came in, um. I think the person who owns that one.
The lowest one?
Yep, came in with maybe the old developer of that? Of this.
Was it a while ago where there was a couple?
There was a couple and a guy.
Yeah, that was different. That was, that was, they wanted to develop. One of these pieces over here, this one. He's like, it'll be easy.
No, somebody came in, cause I remember that. I remember, he, yeah, that sounds right.
Someone did come in by themselves.
About that, oh, okay.
But they wanted to buy it.
Oh, is that what it was? Okay.
But regardless, if we did that, you know, potentially we could like ask permission for the solar company and like get through that way. Um but anyway, I went to corporation council to ask what we might do about this access. He seemed inclined to say, well, we have right to maintain it as an easement, so we could go in. We can't really compel, but we could clear our portion of it, which is half the width of the right away. Right, we're trying to be like this half all the way through down to here to this.
Okay.
Um. Do we want to do that? Would we make a plea to public works? Is it like worth?
What I would say, I mean, I don't know, I would say. Well, they'll never get to it if you ever have spare time. You know what I mean? Like, I don't know how you, it's not anything that's pressing. It's just part of our. Purview that we're supposed to inventory our, our open space and we can't get to it. So, you know, is this something that could be put on the schedule at some point that's, that makes sense for them? You know, it's not a high priority.
I could ask. I mean, sometimes the guys like doing those jobs. It's fun.
Yeah.
We could do something different. Um I don't know if that job is, you guys were out there. I don't know if that's fun, but uh.
Well, on equipment, it might be fun.
Right. If you have like a pecan mower, like on like a, on a bobcat or something, you go like. And just like mow it down, but I don't know if they have what kind of equipment they have.
Okay.
I can, I can ask and just be very conciliatory and like, don't feel like we're. Don't feel like we're asking for this too much, cause we like when you help us out in other ways. Um, okay, I'm gonna, I'll uh reach out to.
But the fee land inventory, is that different than our open space inventory? No, we own those in fee, right?
We own those in fee, yeah, that's feeling. So, so yeah, it's this one, it's just a access easement here. And then we would come into this little notch and then it's this whole bit.
Cause I.
Along this line and then up to this.
What were you talking to me about? Um that once we're done with our open space inventory, the next thing that we need to inventory?
There's a lot of um. During the flood of fifty-five, there was a lot of land that was destroyed, obviously. A lot of people's property were destroyed. And people kinda just like quit claiming property to the city, just to get out from under it. So there's just the, the city basically. Grabbed this land and built levees and did all kinds of stuff. And our accounting, like the assessor records, like that's what this is, this data for the parcels is from. Have these kinda holes. So this is owned by heritage, then this property, if you can see. This interstitial sort of property, right? It's like this line here.
Yep.
That's a no man's land. There's no record of it.
Mine now.
That is owned by the city of Torrington, but this is not. Um it will, it doesn't, we don't know. So there's a lot of, I don't know what's going on, sort of situation. This is a big example of it right here.
Has anybody tried to title search it?
Yes.
Okay.
So Dave Scherf, our GIS person, is like, this is like a pet project of his to just go in and look at all of these butters. And it's really complicated, like this dude will own all the way to the river, but this person won't and it'll be give to the city. So he's generated a map of this area specifically, which has a couple of in holdings that stick out, but for the most part, this is owned by the city. So there's like kinda these properties which end up being great conservation properties, because they're like, they're good wildlife quarters. I mean, they do have these levees on them, which are not army corps certified levees. They just built berms to kinda. Protect, um you know, these, some of these neighborhoods, but they've never been like, yeah, certified that they actually. Would hold up to flooding or, it's just kind of, so anyway, but that's, I'm not there yet. Um that would be kind of just like a next step to kinda get a look at some of these pieces, but they're like, they can be pretty useful, cause um. I mean, this one isn't the best one, but this one right here is owned by the city of Torrington. This was determined, right?
Yep.
And you could potentially have a trail coming off of Cherry all the way along the river up to.
Oh, those people you, people use that. I bet there's a trail there.
Right.
I bet there's a trail, I can kinda, you kinda see it.
There's the berm where the levy is, you can kinda see.
Where's the dam?
Where, uh which dam?
Isn't there a dam in this, in that area? Oh, right there, okay.
Brass Dam.
Okay.
Um but then there's this person owns this, is kind of a classic situation, and then the city owns this. So there's like these, like, you know, people kind of quit claiming this destroyed flood area and the city. Easily built flood protection. Um anyway, so that's just kind of a long game, sort of.
Yeah, that neighborhood is really um maybe more towards Hotchkiss Place, but they're into that river. Cause there's a lot of wildlife.
Oh, into like.
Like into like, yeah, into like, like um wildlife watching there, like it's a.
I thought you meant into as in like this is the hundred year flood plain and they're like literally like.
No, 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 no.
This is all in the floods.
No, that's not what I, but that probably is true too. You would know, yeah.
The numbers have to do with something the public works is doing. I don't know what they are. They're like. Don't know. Good question. I don't know why.
There's a wall somewhere down, there must be a retaining wall on the river near Hotchkiss Place, cause I know that it's like a thing.
Their utility pools.
Neighbors to go sit on the wall and like feed the geese and stuff.
Um, yeah, so that's, so I guess I'll, I mean, do we wanna schedule something? I mean, I think there's another, I think there's another open space property. Set we could do if we wanted to schedule that and kind of I can see, you know, put the Greenbrier thing into. Um like go to the uh uh public works about that.
Uh how do you all feel about scheduling one? Another open space walk.
I'm pretty sure I'm not.
Okay. So it would be for October. And you like, like Thursday's name?
I like Thursdays.
And how long do we have light? On a Thursday? Although we don't have to do night, right?
No, I don't have to do night either, no.
Okay.
Thursday during the day.
But Thursday during the day, what?
Most likely pull off except for.
Tuesdays are beautiful. Wednesdays are beautiful.
And. There's weekends, Saturday or something.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys wanna do weekends, I don't have to be there, um.
So much better when you're there.
Well, thank you.
Weekends don't work with kids. I still want some heat up.
Okay.
Well, we could do one of them on a Wednesday and one on a Thursday, cause we still have the uh.
HVA.
HVA.
We have one more for HVA.
One more, one more practically. Would you wanna do the HVA one? The wildlife crossing one?
Uh Thursday's working best for me, like Thursday.
Yeah. What's Nate saying is what Nate is saying, so we could, we could schedule an HVA crossing on one day. Like a Thursday, a Wednesday or a Thursday, and we can schedule an open space on a Wednesday or Thursday. So that way we could alternate and.
Yeah, we have one more of the H, of the crossing assessments. We did um, we did one already with Karen and Jeff. Up on Weed Road, which is a great crossing. But uh, then that, the last one would be one that's not even mapped, but it's uh, it's on um. Burr Pa, uh Burr Mountain Road. So it's basically connecting this section of Pogna with the state parks here, like through this. Um they don't have it mapped because they don't have this as forest.
Interesting.
Core forest, which is just a, the problem is there's, and I've done these analyses, they have the, they have a road. There's an old road that runs Stark Hill Road all the way down through here, and it's closed off, it's gated, and it's. Barely, I don't know if it's passable in some places anyway, so it's functionally, it's a trail.
Yeah.
But they have it as a road, so it's a, it's a breaking feature between these two. So this is all, so they don't have it, so we would just do this one. They also gave us one, I think we talked about this before.
That was the Route Eight one.
Over Route Eight, just way too complicated.
Yeah.
I don't know what value it really is gonna give them. So this would be the last one. So if that's enticing to anyone, this crossing verse. I don't know where the, where the open space one would be, so I can't give you.
Let me see, so I would have had a conservation commission meeting on the twenty-first?
Twenty-first?
On the twenty-first, or is it the twenty eighth?
The fourth. The fourth, no, the fourth, fourth Tuesday.
Okay, so it'd be the twenty-first. So yeah, the twenty-third probably worked for me, cause I have, I could take time.
Twenty-third, which, which uh?
It's a Thursday. For, oh, for which one?
For open space or HVA.
Twenty-first would be a meeting.
Twenty-first is our meeting.
Twenty-third on Wyde.
Oh, let's do that then.
Yeah. His question is, do we wanna do an HVA? Do we wanna do an open space? Or do we want to? How long do the HVA crossings take?
I don't know. What do you think? Half an hour, forty-five minutes?
We do both?
Definitely enjoyable forty-five minutes.
Yeah, um. We could try to do, we could try to do both.
So that's.
Well, let's just start there and see what I can.
So we'll do an HVA possibly slash open space.
Maybe I'll find a little one to close. Um anytime works for me. I didn't have anything.
Anytime works, I think, for any of us during the day.
All right. Do you wanna do like one o'clock?
That's cool.
Twenty-third?
Yep, Thursday the twenty-third.
All right.
All right. So that kinda takes care of open space. And what's the easement monitoring report?
So I actually, I actually went through, we got new um aerial photos. We get them every year. So I've started just going through. Um I've started going through the, the photo, aerial photos, and we have all the easements and looking for. New encroachments. I kinda did that. Last year I looked back kind of a few years, five, six years. This year I just looked back between the two. So I have kind of a whole list of, you know, basically. The non-compliant stuff. Um and I thought I was gonna just tell you guys, like what I consider to be like the two. Biggest ones, um.
Send the copy of that.
Yeah, do you actually want me to do that first? I can send it, and then you guys can ask and take a look at it? Cause it is, it is, there's a lot in there and uh, and I can try to prioritize. And some of them, again, some of them are in progress. Some are non-compliant, um and I kinda did my own assessment on, based on severity. I tend to be, I tend to. To find it worthwhile to have ones that where there's an easement where someone started like mowing it as a lawn. Just habits stop doing that. Cause it's like, you get habitat value, it's Jason's other wildlife areas. They don't have to do anything. We don't have to do anything. It's just kinda like, it's easy. Yeah, just leave it alone. You don't own it. That's all. We're not gonna make you fix it or anything. Um so I've tried to look at some of the bigger ones of those where it's like, you know. Um and we have actually, I will, I will share a couple successes, cause I think they're satisfying to me. Um. This one here was, they were mowing this entire thing as a lawn. Um and this is open space.
Wow.
Is it perfect? No. Is that okay? I think so. They gave us this, they took this to give it a linear back. I think that that's fine, um considering how far they were before.
Crazy.
Um and it's kind of, it's great, cause it's. No, I think it was always like, this might have been agricultural related to this property, and they built the house, they just kept on mowing it.
Where is that?
Um, this is uh Torrington Street.
Okay.
This is Red Oak Hill.
Okay.
So it's at the end of Red Oak Hill. It was the open space associated with probably like this something here. I don't know if you remember that day. I don't even know what it was. This doesn't show what the roads names are, but um, but anyway, that was a really good one. I have one, I realized it was wild, so let's see that, but see the impact from this law.
Yeah.
But that was. But that was low hanging fruit, now, there's no other good ones like that that are that large and that contiguous to like a huge.
Yeah.
Piece of open space already, um, but okay, I will send, I will send these.
Okay, so we really did the HVA crossing assessment under the Red Mountain Trail.
So. There was an issue with the utility easement over the Ocean State property, it cannot be resolved. And therefore, we are, we are redesigning and, uh, it's very frustrating, um, but it's not the worst thing in the world. It has benefits, so basically, we were gonna come in, this is the Ocean State Plaza, this is McDermott, Farley. We're gonna come in, you can see the paint, right, from kind of a multi-use trail here, cross, go onto the plaza, go through this area and then sneak up to get on the trail going the north on this quarter here. And the parking lot was gonna be here, um, but it was gonna provide connection to Prospect Street down here, like via bike path. Now, we're gonna leave this parking lot, we're gonna leave the design of it and everything is approved by planning and zoning and just go all the way to North Elm, which was something that, uh, Torrington Trails was advocating for, um, but ours, our engineer didn't want to do a mid-block crossing here, um, because of this curve. So what they're gonna do is they're just gonna run, run it down the sidewalk, maybe they'll be able to enlarge it a little bit, maybe not cuz it's state-owned. And they're still gonna do the crossing here and it's still gonna go down there.
So they're gonna cross.
Uh, they're gonna cross this, there's already, uh.
Four lines.
Yeah, you're gonna do, there's already a crossing there, it's so good, hey, but it's. See these lines?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are the crossings. You do like balance on the balance beam, so they're gonna, they're gonna fix this intersection with like rights crossing, which is, was never there in the first place.
They're not gonna have to cross over the street to cross again?
Not to cross again, no, they would cross here and then go up to the city-owned property and then go north. So it's not that bad, the only part that I'm a little heartbroken about is that part of my grant application was like having this better connect to the plaza for residents to be able to access the shopping plaza. Now, we're gonna have to cut this off and there's a, there's a, uh, herd path, right, existing little trail that goes down to the plaza.
Decades.
That has been used, Christine enjoyed it when she lived in this neighborhood and now it's gonna have to be.
It's gonna be gone.
And so how, they're gonna have. I don't think so.
I think you say cut. We don't have to actually fence it off, they can still use it.
No, I don't think we're gonna go to that level, but it's like, it's not making it better, right? They may, they're gonna have to like go down and then bankman and make some kind of issue that will be Ocean State's problem, I think, um, but.
So you know how this property just requested a ninety-day extension for their, do they never filed in maps?
Yes.
Why can't, why couldn't it just renegotiated that instead of a fee and loo? We could have a easement, right, like on the prop, whatever the property line is gonna be to access that?
At the bottom of the property.
Well, this part here, we were thinking about that actually, when this whole property was coming up, it was a subdivision, right? We were thinking about doing that access there, I think there was some conflict here.
Was there?
But besides that, right, you're gonna have people come up through here, then they're gonna cut through here, then they're gonna go through here, but it doesn't cor- correct the issue of going through here because is someone gonna come down McDermott or, uh, Goodwin, go over here?
Yeah.
Here and then into the plaza, no, it doesn't.
Alright, so it doesn't make a lot of.
I mean, otherwise they'd be, are they gonna go all the way down to North Elm? Definitely not, are they gonna do that? Probably not. They're gonna cut through.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and there's just not much to be done about that, unfortunately. And it's not that, yeah, right, and it's not their fault, it was the Eversource, it was the easement, it was, you know. Um, but we're just, we're just gonna move soldier on.
Yay, so is that gonna be able to be done next year?
I don't know, I'm meeting with, with Deep cuz we're gonna have to renegotiate the, it kind of changes a lot of like, our match was like improving this and like, there's, it's substantially different, but not really, so I need a meeting with them to see what.
I'm sure Deep wants it to go through.
Oh, they totally, yeah, and they, and they deal with this kind of thing, they're like, you wouldn't be the first project that an Eversource easement built.
Yeah.
Um, so, so I was like, well, that's not how, how we're hoping it's gonna go, but, uh.
But they're like, we know, because we've seen it before.
Exactly, so anyway, so that's, we're still working on that, um, but, you know, we're talking, pushing this out another year or two.
Uh, in the scheme of things?
Have they not already been like twenty years?
In the scheme of things, it's a blink of an eye, okay, so next moving on is the Cedar Lane Conservation easement mitigation.
Uh, I think I just kind of carried over, but what I, but I will say that the, this was a gentleman who cut a conservation easement up on Cedar Lane or even have the note up there still, so I gave him, I brought it to commission, he didn't show up to that meeting, but you guys authorized me to work out an agreement that kind of looked something like this with replanting this easement area. He's super against the idea of doing this, um, doesn't really under. It's tough, yeah, eh, you know, it, it's like, it's a conversation where it's like, it's an easement, but he's like, there's my property, but it's an easement and, um, and there was a complaint.
Yeah, look at, look at your deep, but this is the one that also has the, did somebody call on this, is like, there's somebody next door and she was saying that the trees were dangerously tall, is that the place?
It's this one, yeah, these trees, so they cut a, a few of these pine trees and they were really tall and I, you know, dangerous even, I, I don't. I don't dispute that, but you gotta at least put something back there, cuz the point, this was supposed to be like, we're gonna do the subdivision, but to, to alleviate the concerns of the neighbors, we're gonna have this buffer so it doesn't look as bad as you think.
And you're offering very short shrubs.
Totally, that's the point, is to get it established so that they don't have to, no one has to have that excuse that they can't replant it again, so.
So you're just plugging along on this guy.
He was supposed to, he was supposed to, he was supposed to have something or talk to me by this fall.
Hasn't done it.
I don't think he's going to do it, so I'll probably, I may wait till next year and give him a full opportunity to do it up his own accord.
Alright, next order of business is adjournment.
Uh, I've got one thing.
Oh, okay.
The, uh, DEP has issued its recreational trails grant. So that's opened up, I don't know, and that's, I think the application due on December, December twelfth. So I don't know if there's anything that we need.
Yeah, I don't know if they're gonna.
And I, I don't know if the Torrington Trails Network knows about it yet.
Okay, I'll, uh, I have to talk to them anyway because the plans changed, so.
Yeah, so I mean, it, it, you know, I, I don't know how, how widespread the knowledge of this grant is out there.
Okay, yeah, I honestly, I usually get those notifications and I didn't get as many.
Well, it's, it's out there, it was, I just opened up today.
Oh, today, okay, um, so maybe it's sitting in my inbox, I, cuz I usually get the like, the grant announcement notices, but.
I don't know how I stumble across it.
That's the benefit of having a formal plan, planner on the. Great, yeah, no, I mean, we don't have, like my bandwidth is all on, on this one right now, I'm, I'm just trying to get this to move and I think we would consider like doing the bridge over the Nogga Tuck, do this kind of funding in the future.
Over?
Over the Nogga Tuck by New Field Road.
By New Field.
So the railroad bridge.
Oh, okay.
Trying to get that like.
Yeah, well, this might be.
Implementation of it.
So.
This might be it. Yes, they can do, but they have, gotta have a twenty percent match.
And that's why it would be great for the city to do it because they could do this and, and then the match could be paving the multi-use trail down in the right of way through, like, you know, through this area by just like making the sidewalk into a multi-use trail. And that cost can be matched, I, there's, there's, it's complicated cuz this owner is like, we have to get through, this is the, the, the church. And they own this and like, would they want access and I heard that they might be interested, so there's.
Pretty narrow right of way there.
They'd need, they'd need to occupy this.
Yeah. They use that for parking.
They do.
Yeah.
They do, and so it would be like, do we like do park, does this, and do you like parking improvements for them in exchange to have it more open? Yeah, I, that would be a, a negotiation with them and I don't think we're, we've even had basic talks and they just lost their minister, I think.
Oh, really?
Passed away, so fairly recently, so, um, it might be tough for them to get into.
Well, somebody new coming in.
Maybe.
Time to build a relationship then.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Alright, so, uh, next order of business, adjournment.
Done with.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Question carries, thank you, everyone.